Good evening, colleagues on council, citizens of Portsmouth, city staff, invited guests, and city leaders. I want to welcome you all to the new public work session that we're putting back in place for Monday night. Also, I want to welcome everybody and say Happy New Year since this is our first work session, public work session. We look forward to engagement and getting some things done, at least getting some direction. So with that, I would ask that Madam Clerk, would you please call the row?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant.
President.
Dr. Dotson.
Here.
Mr. Hugel.
Present.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Tillage.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
And now we'll turn the meeting over to our city manager, Mr. Carter. Sure you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to all of you. It was good to see everybody here tonight. I have a couple of presentations that we'd like to provide to you this evening. One, I'm going to do myself on the MWBE policy and the disparity study. And then we have Roberts and Mr. Wright, who will actually work with, who will do the presentation on the road and bridge maintenance. As we approach both of those, particularly the one on the road and bridge maintenance, the whole purpose of that particular briefing is going to be to give you an insight on to where we are with that road and bridge maintenance process, how it's been handled in the past, and where we think we need to go with it in the future because it has some significant budget impacts. And we want to make sure we can get this in front of you in time for it to be useful as we're approaching the budget. There'll also be a similar presentation that we'll want to do for our public utilities and also one for our stormwater system. So just want to get those items in front of you, give you the information that you need so that you can make some informed decisions as we move forward. But the first one is going to be the information on the WMBE policy, and I will present that myself.
Okay.
You can just hit the down button, or you can click whichever one you want to do.
It's old school, man.
(laughing).
All right. Good evening, council members, and thank you for this opportunity to discuss what I think is an important issue for our city, which is the minority and women's business enterprise policy. Today, we'll dive into the findings of the 2023 disparity study, which has provided a clear picture of some inequities in our procurement system. We'll introduce the proposed policy. Hopefully, you guys have gotten a copy of that and, over the next few weeks, have an opportunity to kind of go through that and provide me any questions or concerns that you may have. There's no action required of you of what we're providing tonight. This is really more so for our new council members, an opportunity to see what it is, hear from the staff as to what it's all about, why we're doing it, and kind of get you caught up. At some point, we will ask you to approve a policy on this, but this is not what we're doing tonight. This is purely an introduction so that you have some history and some background on where we are and how we got here. Our journey to this policy began over a decade ago, in which, in 2013, the city of Portsmouth conducted a disparity study, which identified significant gaps in the utilization of minority and women-owned businesses in our city contracts. While some progress has been made, since then, the 2023 disparity study, which is 10 years later, revealed that these disparities still persist, particularly in key procurement categories such as construction and professional services. For example, minority firms only account for 10% of construction dollars spent, despite representing a substantial portion of the available business community. Recognizing an urgency for this issue, we have developed this, the MWBE policy, to foster a more equitable procurement system, ensure that all businesses have an opportunity to thrive in Portsmouth. The 2023 disparity study provides an in-depth analysis of the challenges we face. Across all procurement categories, significant disparities exist between the availability of minority firms and the actual utilization. For instance, African-American firms received only 0.66%, that's less than 1% of total construction dollars. And this is from a 2020 to 21 study. Hispanic-American-owned businesses fare similarly with 0.68%. These numbers starkly contrast the 89.58% of construction dollars awarded to non-minority firms. The study identifies discrimination as a systematic discrimination, a systemic discrimination as a contributing factor, both within the public and the private sector. However, it also highlights the tremendous potential for positive change that we can actually make for ourselves. The recommendations are clear: We must adopt a race and gender-conscious measures to address The MWBE policy is a forward-looking framework designed to address the inequities highlighted in the disparity study. Its primary goal is to enhance the participation of minority and women-owned businesses in our city procurement process. To achieve this, the policy establishes aspirational goals for inclusion, ensuring that progress can be measured and progress can be tracked. It also includes some robust compliance and monitoring mechanisms, ensuring transparency and accountability at every step. At its core, the policy is about leveling the playing field, prohibiting discrimination, and fostering equal opportunities for all of our businesses. This approach not only addresses the issues, but also aligns the Portsmouth values of fairness, equity, and economic growth. Our policy is built on five pillars that ensures its success as we move forward. First is the aspirational goals. These are non-mandatory targets, repeat that, non-mandatory targets, that encourage contractors to increase minority participation. For example, the policy sets a 10% minority participation goal in construction and a 15% minority participation goal in professional services. Similar targets for non-professional services and for goods and services. Now, you're going to have to write those down. It's going to be on the subsequent slide. Contractors are required to provide a good faith effort, and they're required to document and demonstrate their outreach to minority businesses. This includes submitting detailed subcontracting plans where necessary, maintaining records of bid invitations, and providing evidence of follow-up with potential minority businesses. There is a certification process that the city itself won't certify businesses, but will use existing certifying agencies, such as SBA or DOT or VDOT as the certified agency, so that we can ensure that the criteria which is set at being at least 51% owned and operated by qualified minority individuals will be actually validated and confirmed by someone other than the city. We'll also do quite a bit of monitoring of this because it's hard to expect what you don't inspect. And we will be inspecting this process all along the way to ensure that regular reporting is a cornerstone of this policy. Contractors must submit data on minority participation, which will be audited for accuracy. Noncompliance can result in consequences, such as penalties or disqualifications from future bids. And there's always the economic impact. By implementing this policy, Portsmouth is going to gain significant increase through minority participation, by redirecting some of the dollars spent outside of our local economy back into our local economy through those businesses in that marketplace. It's not just something that we should do morally, but I think it's something that will actually benefit us through our economic efforts. This table is pulled from the disparity study and shows a clear visual representation of disparities in the construction spending. There are other tables used throughout the study, but I pulled this one out just as an example. Despite their availability, African-American-owned businesses received only $1.6 million, or, like I said before, 0.66% of the total construction dollars. Meanwhile, non-minority firms captured the vast majority of construction dollars, adding staggering $218 million, or 89.58% of those construction dollars spent. These numbers speak volumes about the barriers faced by not just minorities, but women-owned businesses also. He also highlighted the critical need for some documented policy that ensures fair access to city contracts and promote equity among our economic development engines. The aspirational goals set in this policy are both ambitious, but they are achievable. They reflect findings, the findings of the disparity study, and provide a clear benchmark for progress. For construction, the goal is at 10%. For architecture and engineering, it's at 12%. For professional services, it's 15%. For non-professional services, it's 16%. For goods and supplies, 5%. But the overall aspirational goal is 10% for our procurement system. But let me remind you that these goals are not quotas. They're designed to encourage meaningful participation and to ensure that all businesses have an opportunity to succeed. By setting these targets, Portsmouth is taking a bold step, but a necessary step, toward the economic growth and the equality of our businesses. While we have these goals set, there are mechanisms that we've actually placed in the policy to ensure that these goals are actively set. We don't want to set a goal and then just have it be a goal, but we want to actually move this process forward. This is a conscious decision that we're making, so we have to do things that encourages people to move toward their goal. Thank you for your attention and for considering this important policy. And I stand ready to field any questions that you may have, but it's really important that you dive into the construct of this policy. And if you don't have a copy of the full disparity study, please let me know. I'll make sure you have a copy of that because those are two documents that's paired together. You probably need to have both to really get a full understanding of what we're doing and why we're trying to do it. This wasn't just something that City of Portsmouth came up with. This was a documented process that shows that we have some work to do in our city. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have, or I'll make sure I find the answer that you can satisfy your need.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing us up to speed, especially the new folks here, on the MWBE policy and the disparity study. I think it's very important that we tackle this as a city, especially with the development plans and everything that we have coming up. And I tried to look through this as much as possible from the emails sent earlier, but I did notice from, and I'm hoping to get some clarity either now or later, on the penalty section, fines and penalties, that was a discussion point, I think, during the last presentation from September 10th meeting. Is that, has that been clarified a bit, the difference between that 11%? We were trying to explain it in that meeting, and I still didn't catch it, guys. So the 11% I think is punitive damages versus the fines and penalties that were listed in, like, how the individual letters, like, what's the difference there? Because I still didn't really quite understand that.
So, ma'am, ma'am, just that, ma'am.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. What we had attempted to do was put into place what would be referred to as
Liquidated damages.
Right. Punitive damages are not appropriate for these kinds of provisions. It would be wholly rejected by any court. It's lost since the beginning of time. So what you have to do for liquidated damages is you have to project what the possible value of loss would be. And so with the variety of contracts that we're trying to cover with our minority participation policy, we came up with a formula, using the school boards as a basis, to look at something as small as widgets that we would be procuring to a larger contract. And so we put in there a range that would allow us to be able to fluctuate between the two. Again, this is just policy. So it's a living document, and you can, you know, choose from it as you will based on the facts and circumstances of a given situation. And so even though we have this particular range, this is not set in stone. And so you can, you could use a number of options that are listed in there. So it's almost like a laundry list of things to do. And let's find, let's say, for example, we hire our minority business coordinator, and they look into the facts through our reporting, that these really don't fit what has, what the market really drives is this sort of result. We can go back, that's the beauty of a policy versus a ordinance or statute or something like that, we can easily go back and then change that or give it broader language so that the individual negotiating that particular piece, whether it be procurement or someone else, can, you know, properly protect the purpose of this, which is, you know, to have a business, to legitimately want to have minority people participate. And so it would, the goal is to make sure that this gives enough of the damages related to to do so, not to punitively punish. That would, that would not be the purpose of liquidating damages.
Okay. So this is definitely, I think I've read somewhere in here that it's the city kind of will reasonably assess what it is, but then under, I guess, each of these clo, I don't know what to call these, letters A through F.
Yeah, clauses.
I don't know. Okay, clauses. Under each of these clauses, there's kind of a lesser of the two values, right?
Sure. Yeah. It's like legal ease for, you can have, it gives you a range or an option, set of options to choose from, depending on the circumstances of the procurement or the contract that you're trying to use.
Okay.
So your mindset is right on. So.
So, okay, let me use a, like, example here, right? So if we're talking about a large contract, let's say, I don't know if we would do this large, but let's say 20 million, right?
I would do a lot.
Okay, right. Okay, let's say 20 million, right? So the 11%, what is that, like, 2.2 million approximately, right? Versus if they, if they are held accountable to any of these clauses, I think these fines minus letter G, that equals up to 210,000. So which one would, like?
So, so that's the point. It would be ridiculous to do 2 billion. No one would agree to that contract unless it's appropriate for the circumstances, unless that's the value of what would be lost considering the violation. So you're really looking at the analysis by the type of violation for the type of contract, and what would be reasonable for the market to cover what damages we would have as a result.
So it would be assessed that that time is not numbered in the contract.
It would be in the contract. So you would consider that in the negotiation of the contract. But you can't include all potential, like,
In this policy. I got you. So that would be, okay, thank you.
But that's, that's great. Yeah, good exchange. Anybody else have any questions? I think that was a good way to explain it.
Yes, thank you.
That does, that helps quite a bit, to know that the language is in the actual contract. This is the policy that gives us the authority and the right to put it in there. The contract will have the language.
Okay, that's, that makes sense. Thank you.
Also, can I just jump in there real quick? I'm sorry, I just wanted to also say, we came prepared to provide other options that other localities have used, so that you could see comparable to other jurisdictions what their liquidated damages languages are. And so I will pass that out if you have that, if anticipated that might be a question. And so just take a look at that.
Okay, that works. Thank you.
And also remember, as we're doing these contracts, the contractor is assuming some risk here. And so we can't put things in a contract that actually end up with us not being able to execute contracts. And so that's why you have some flexibility as you're trying to implement these things. And we, we're at the very infant stage. This is a brand-new birth, okay? So we're going to have to mature a little bit in this, kind of figure out what works and don't work.
Thank you.
Councilman Dotson.
So my, one of the questions I've always had about the disparity study is, are we attacking the problem correctly? In other words, if we only had 0.66% African-Americans, is that all the contract applicants that we had? In other words, were there 200 applicants, we only got one, or were there's only one applicant, and we only got that one? Are we attacking the problem at the right end of it, or should we also be attacking the problem prior to that? In other words, teaching people how to apply for the contracts, encouraging the businesses to become businesses that can apply for it? This is an end, not a cause, and I don't see that addressed in any of the information that's ever been presented, that this is the correct avenue to attack this problem, or should we be attacking it prior to this? Doesn't that question make sense? I'm sorry.
It does. Your part of the process is not just putting language in a contract and holding the contract accountable, but it's also the person that will, will fill this role. Part of their charge is going to be going into the community and building capacity. So one of the things that the disparity study actually looks at, it doesn't just look at was there a disparity? It looks at the capacity of the minorities to perform those things. If there's no capacity, there's really no disparity, all right? But based on the disparity study, it said that there was capacity. We just didn't utilize the capacity. So how do we raise businesses to the point that they can become, first of all, viable enough to handle small and large contracts, or maybe become a sub on some other larger clients' contracts? We have to help our business community understand what those values are, understand how to position themselves to participate, but also cushion a little bit off the, out of the nest and into some areas where they may not have had, or even thought that they could operate previously. So there's a education piece of this, as well as a compliance piece of this.
Do we have an officer already in charge of that?
No.
Do we have somebody already, already working that?
No, sir.
On educating, on educating people, an educational officer that helps people get proper certifications for contracts?
No, sir.
That's a big EDA. Are you talking about the workforce? I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, no, that's fine. Go ahead, Councilman, I mean, Vice Mayor.
City manager, you mentioned compliance is going to be, I think, quite a task, given the volume of contracts. And you mentioned that the city is not going to be doing the evaluation of the compliance?
Yes, sir. We're not going to do the certification of businesses. We're going to do the evaluation of compliance.
Who's going to do that?
We have a position that we've already advertised, that actually, we're in the process of making an offer for a particular person, a BBE coordinator. I think we've upgraded that to manager to get a better selection. But that's the person that will be daily in charge of making sure that we educate, but also making sure that we have compliance for those businesses that already participated.
Also, from a purchasing standpoint, on the request for proposals, is that language going to be specific to each contract as far as the contractor, the knowing what the expectation is?
Absolutely. We can't hold you accountable for something that we didn't tell you about prior to engaging in business with us. So absolutely, that, this language that we're talking about will become a standard part of the contracts that we, RFPs, bids, all those things, will become a standard part of the package that we put in.
Getting back to what Councilman Dotson said, you know, having it, having the verbiage in the contracts, one thing, is that, because I think that's going to be a learning curve with the way Portsmouth has done business in the past. So is that going to be through some conferences, workshops? How's that going to be communicated initially, other than just changing the wording in a solicitation?
Oh, absolutely not. We're not going to just, you know, today we're doing one thing, tomorrow we're going to do something different. It's going to be a process of educating all of our participants of what we are going to expect. That's what we're starting to do now, so that as we get through this process and get to the finish line where we actually have an approved policy, it won't be a surprise to anybody that this is happening. But we're working through this process even now, and we will continue to work as we bring on new businesses that will be part of their onboarding process. And again, remember, there's an education piece that the person that will run this office is charged with, is not just educating underperforming businesses, but educating those businesses that we do business with every day about what the new standard is going to be and how we will be engaging from this point forward.
And how often is the evaluation report card, if you may, is that going to be done on a quarterly basis, or annual, semi-annual?
Every time they submit a request for payment, we will evaluate what you're submitting your request for payment for, and does it meet the qualifications for what you're about to be paid for.
Well, I guess I'm talking about council and the public in general, how we, what kind of progress or lack of are we making?
Oh, you're talking about evaluating how the program is actually performing.
Yeah.
We'll do probably quarterly, but at least semi-annual reports to this body about where we are. We're collecting data, and that, it won't be a good field, it'll be actually data that we bring back to this group. So, okay, this is where we started, and so where we are today, this is what we expect to be, because we got aspirational goals, that are already set for what we're supposed to be. So we'll measure ourselves based on how we're moving along that path.
And you also mentioned keeping money within the city. And what I would like to see is a Portsmouth-owned business, and I've seen this in other contracts, I don't know if the Commonwealth would allow it, but you get a, an advantage being a local company that's bidding on a piece of business. I know the state of Maryland allows this. If you're a state business, in some cases in Maryland, even a particular city or a county, that if you're submitting a bid on business, you get 8% advantage because you're keeping the, you're keeping the money within, and obviously, the employees are benefiting from that as well.
Many political subdivisions have what's called local preference.
Yeah.
And what local preference does is give the local business community an opportunity to either match, if they're close, or to either match if they're close, or win if they're not too close. It just depends on the language and what's legally available here in Virginia. But many municipalities, many states have what's called a local preference.
I would suggest that we look and see what's available in Virginia, if there's anything, any language in state code that would allow us to do that. I think that would be beneficial for our local businesses and contractors that are going to be competing for business.
Absolutely. And that is not a minority or process. That is strictly just business that can participate.
Exactly.
I just have two quick questions. And I saw Councilman Hugel had some questions, so I won't take too long. But just a follow-up on Councilman Moody's kind of questioning about the reporting back. I do want to say that, as you pointed out, the school board does have an MWBE program that's been stood up for a while. And I think, you know, maybe just looking at some of the practices that have worked in terms of them trying to meet their aspirational goals as well, might be some good best practices for the council to take back or consider. One of those being that they have an MWBE committee, so that there's a constant review with some council insight, but then a report back to the larger council at large. Or just wanted to throw that out there as part of your question. And then, secondly, I did have a question on part of, two quick questions, on the evaluation process, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Trying to understand that a bit from page 18 of the policy. So if I understand, there's the MWBE office, and you mentioned you're hiring currently, and I think I heard the mayor say for an MWBE coordinator? Is that what that is?
Coordinator is what we originally advertised. Didn't get a quality individual that we were looking for. We upgraded that name to manager so that we can kind of upgrade the quality.
So does that, MWBE office, they do their evaluation, and then they can evaluate the responsiveness, is what I'm reading. But then if it, and then they give their response to the purchasing department, is what I'm understanding. So does the purchasing, then the purchasing department determines, I guess, responsiveness based on the purchasing manual of the city? So does the purchasing department have the ability to override the decision of the MWBE office?
It's going to be important that they collaborate and have regular conversations about who's performing or not performing, so that when these things come up, ultimately it'll roll up to me if it is necessary to do so. But it's going to be a collaborative effort between the WBE manager, who's into that day-to-day of trying to figure out how we're doing with this program, and the purchasing department, who's actually awarding the contract. So they're going to have to work in concert with each other to make sure that we do this.
All right. And then my last question is real quick. On this aspirational goals from the slide?
Yes, ma'am.
So does that, do these goals take into account those utilization rates? Or am I, they does? Okay.
These goals, I didn't create these. These came from the disparity study itself.
Okay. Because I was, it made me think when Councilman Dr. Dotson was asking about the usage, I think. And so I remember that you were asking about the...
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So I think it was, I was looking at that past study was, availability was 20%, but utilization was 8%. So I wanted to know, like, were those goals encompassing? Okay, great.
Yeah, the actual disparity study, which is several pages long, has its methodology within each of these analyses. And it's really good to look at because they actually pinpoint very specific industries, and they talk about what was available and wasn't available in terms of capacity. It will much deeper inform the policy because it sort of lifted from that, but it gives the sort of those details. So be sure you take a look at that.
Will do. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Hugel, you have the floor.
Thanks, ma'am. So a couple of comments and then a couple of questions. So first, to Councilman Dotson's question around training, your procurement team, and I think the school system procurement team led a day-long training session out at TCC and kind of introduced, you know, at least offered. And I attended. And one of the things that I saw was most of the small business owners that were in the room had no idea before they walked in where to find announcements of procurements with the city or with the school system. And so I think to your point, there is a training issue out there. That was a good way to at least introduce another collection of folks because they are counted as capability available for us to use. But if they don't know how to find the thing to bid on it, we ain't going to get an opportunity to use them because they will never submit a bid unless they happen to get subcontracted by somebody who does know how to do procurement. I wonder about our ability to collect past performance. I don't know, does our procurement group have a past performance library for...
For current contracts?
For current contracts?
Yes.
Okay. Is that...
It's not based on this. The only thing that's based on this is whether or not the actual contract is a minority or not. That's the only thing we're checking today.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to get there in a second. First, do we, does the procurement group use a past performance library to evaluate proposals now? Is that part of the grading criteria that before they award, they go review somebody's past performance?
Absolutely. Now, I know about the drug game, that's what I'm required, because I have a company that I'm meeting with, I'm trying to meet with, they postponed a couple times because of past performance, and they want another contract. But before they can get another contract, we're going to have to sit down and talk about why your performance is the way it is, and how we're going to improve that performance going forward. If I can't ever have that conversation, I can't ever sign that contract.
Yeah. And the reason I ask is because my perception from poking at this back during disparity study time was that we didn't have a good past performance library, and we weren't using past performance to, as a, you know, a piece of the grading for the procurements that were in the process of awarding. And so the only way this is going to work is, first, we got to collect the data.
Absolutely.
And then, second, we got to use the data, keep the data, record the data, and then be able to pull the data back up the next time that somebody submits a bid to say, so last time, your goal, your aspirational goal was whatever it was, and the data shows that you didn't come anywhere close to your aspirational goal, nor were we convinced that the good faith effort that you committed to was really in good faith, if you know what I mean? So...
Wholeheartedly concur with everything you just said.
Yeah. So then, just to share a point with especially the new folks, so the MGT person that briefed us on the disparity study acknowledged that the data that was available to support this study was incomplete. Now, I say that not to say, well, you know, we should throw the study out. That's not my point, because intuitively, we got an issue. But the fact is, the data's incomplete. And the only way that we're really going to know are we making progress is if we get the data that we need. And as I recall, she said, the data that she got was basically prime contractor data. So if the prime contractor was an MWBE contractor, then everything they did was counted as, in that category. If the prime contractor was not an MWBE contractor, nothing they did was counted, whether they had subcontractors who were MWBE subcontractors or not, that data wasn't available and therefore wasn't counted. And so the only way this is going to work is if we have a script that goes into every contract going forward that requires a contract deliverable that spells out, we want to see the dollars that go consistently with the way the policy says, which is, if you're an MWBE prime, count your money, count any subcontract that's an MWBE, but don't count anybody that's not an MWBE contractor in your numbers. And similarly, if you're not an MWBE prime, you can only count subcontractors that executed dollars on your contract. But you have to report that because right now, we're getting none of that, which leads me to my next question. Are we going to go back for the contracts that are out there now, or the contracts that are in place when the policy gets approved and modify the contracts, existing contracts, to ask for the data that we need from those contractors to know? And I guess my point is, I wouldn't think, if I owned a contract with the city, that you'd come and tell me, well, now after the fact, I'm going to lay a MWBE aspirational goal on you. That doesn't seem like the right thing to do. But it does seem like a reasonable thing to do, to start asking those contractors, when you submit invoices, record for our behalf, for the purpose of populating our database, dollars that are MWBE dollars and dollars that are not. So are we going to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because that's a whole bunch of contract modifications that...
I think you, can I jump in here?
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
You're not talking about contract modifications because you're not going to do that. But what we are talking about...
But it would be a contract modification if we aren't requiring them to report that level of detail now, and we suddenly ask them to report that level of detail. If I was a contractor, I would say, it's going to cost me some extra money to gather the data and report it that you're asking for. And so why wouldn't I get a chunk of that money?
Because that would require additional consideration that the city wouldn't offer. What you're talking about is sort of like it's an, like the aspirational goal itself, you're asking them to consider providing additional information as part of this agreement that they have. It would have to be something separate from the initial contract. It's orange, it's semantics, but I want to be very clear that we're not going to be amending the contract itself, but we may create a subsidiary agreement, or some sort of MOU or something, or just a good faith provide us this data, but...
There's no clawback opportunity here.
Exactly.
So I'm with you. I'm not looking for clawback. I'm just looking for the contracts that are already in place, that we start getting data, that we aren't getting right now on those contracts, simply because we didn't have a policy that required procurement to ever ask for that level of data before.
And if we ask for that level of data to be provided to us, contractor has every right to say, you know what, it's going to cost me X amount of dollars to do that. And I have every right to say, you know what, that's worth it or it's not worth it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but we will ask the question.
Okay.
But it's a question, not a mandate.
And then I guess the last point and maybe question that I'll make and ask, so I see in the policy, we have spelled out penalties. That's one way to stimulate behavior. Another way to stimulate behavior is incentives. I don't see any words and any language in the policy that would suggest, rather than kicking them in the teeth, because to, I think to the attorney's point, if the penalty's too big, or if the potential penalty's too big, we're going to chase people away from wanting to bid on work in the city, as opposed to if we think about, hey, we want to incentivize behavior by, if you meet or exceed the aspirational goals by some percentage, then you get some bonus money for exceeding the aspirational goal and cause people to want to come here and bid on work because if they achieve the goals that were after, they get rewarded for that behavior, as opposed to getting kicked in the teeth. So there's nothing in here about incentives. Should there be, I guess, is my question.
Have to give that some thought, and what the appropriate incentive would be.
And I guess if there are others that have that kind of policy out there, maybe we should poke it to see if there are incentive clauses that they have in their policy to consider.
Can I just, I want to just follow up.
You go ahead and follow up with him, and then ask next, Councilman Tillijoy have the floor.
I just want to follow up to your point. What you are describing is already part of the state's procurement statutes. And so this methodology is already being prescribed across the state. And so the incentivization is that it's probably something that most businesses that do it are used to anyway. Not to say that we don't need to, but it's not as much as a need or draw, because this is sort of a common thing across the state, as maybe what happens when you don't, which is really where we wanted to focus. The council before you wanted to focus on that part. And so I think that's why it's there, and the incentivization is not there. It's not to say that we can't, but that's part and parcel of what I think was the focus at the time. And then, I'm sorry.
I agree with you. And what I'm suggesting is, it's a new council, and maybe we should consider...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Both sides of the equation, because the last council was more focused on the negative side of the equation.
Sure. And that's a policy issue. I'll leave that to the manager. I did want to just clarify, since this is a live proceeding, that you had mentioned that the data for the disparity study was incomplete, which that was exactly what she said. But the methodology was consistent, so it still supports our narrowly tailored approach, and it does not invalidate the disparity. So I just want to say that publicly.
And I'll give you an amen, okay? So I'm not disputing that we should chuck the thing out because the data was incomplete.
Absolutely.
It is what it is.
Right.
And the only way it's going to be better is if we fix the data issue by acquiring the data as we go, which is the plan.
Yeah, I'm just protecting the record, counsel, that's all.
Yep, I get it. Thank you.
Counselor Tillijoy.
To Councilman Hugel's point, I think I had brought this up when we discussed this a few months ago. I think that having a mixture of penalties and incentives would be the best approach. Because we certainly, we look at the penalties that we've put into our policy versus some of the penalties that other localities have put in theirs based on this document. Ours look kind of low. And like I said a couple of months ago, people can build that into a budget. So, but you really can't build the incentive aspect in it as much. So, for example, if I know I'm not going to meet X, Y, and Z, but I'm going to put it into my RFP, I can build in a $200,000 buffer. And so you can, most contractors are going to, for a big contract, they're going to, like I said, break glass, $200,000. But if we're taking it from an approach of incentivizing, where, okay, when we meet this, this data you may get, and I'm just using this as an example, not saying this is what we're going to do.
Right.
But it might be a situation where you'll be a tax reduction, or some type of incentive in regards to bonus payment if you meet 10% or 15% of your MWBE policy. Like I said, I just don't want it to become a normal thing where I'm bidding on a contract, and like I said, I know I'm not going to meet it, so I'm just going to up my contract costs, and the city's going to pay it, and they're just going to give you the $200,000 anyway. Because that kind of defeats the purpose of including the policy.
That works the first time. Past performance will bank you the next time. So we're going to keep records of those things. And yes, I still think we probably need to reconsider the incentive.
Incentive, yes.
Just make sure that if you build that in the first time, that may work, but past performance will bank you the next time you try to do it.
Correct.
Thank you. I wanted to comment also on the incentive piece. I think those are great examples that you both provided. I was thinking from another standpoint that the incentive was upfront, because in the policy, you get extra points towards your proposal response for complying or having available MWBE company or MWBE subcontractor. So you're already getting those extra points to your response. So in some cases, you're already getting that push above another potential provider or proposal responder in that aspect. But I do think if we do consider the dollar amount incentive, that also opens up the other question of, okay, if the prime is, you know, non-WE, but they are using suppliers that are MWBE, does the prime get... suppliers that are M W B, does the prime get the incentive 100%? Or do you, you know, how would that trickle down to the people where, you know, this policy is there to support? So I just wanted to throw that out. I think it's a good discussion to have though, if we consider that.
Any more questions?
Just a general question. Where do we stand compared to other localities, other cities, Norfolk, for example, Virginia Beach? Do they have similar policies in place? Are we ahead of the curve on this? Are we behind the curve on this?
I think we're somewhere in the middle of the curve on this. We have some places that are pursuing or have already pursued. We have some that maybe are a little bit relevant at the moment. I don't know that this is a wave. As a matter of fact, a lot of things that pertain to D E and I have been pulled back. So again, I'm not sure that this is a wave. I don't just think it's the right thing to do.
Any other questions, guys?
Thank you.
Well, a couple of observations that I have, having listened to everybody. Number one, in terms of the procurement process as it relates to getting businesses to put in for the R F P and the request for proposal, I like the idea because the idea of adding that particular caveat to the proposal, because I've done a number of R F Ps in my business and that is one of the caveats they ask. And it does give you some particular points, right? That gives you a better favor in terms of winning the contract. And I think that requires documentation and other information when you go through that process. So you just can't say you're this. You have to actually provide the documentation that you're that. So I think that's a good way to approach it. And it is an incentive because if you meet that standard, you could particularly have extra points going towards you winning that contract, number one. The other thing, couple of questions that I had. I know that in the body of the disparity study, it says the city attorney will review the program from time to time. So we have that oversight in place. We have the coordinator manager whose team will be looking at data, plus we'll have the city attorney's office. And I know you look at it from a more legal compliance standpoint, but that's another check and balance to me. So I really like that idea. The other thing I wanted to share with everyone, there was some talk about what happens when you have a contract and you can't find the number of minority providers for those services for that contract? As an example, construction. I've talked to a lot of folks in the region and unfortunately, we don't have a number, a good number of minority construction contractors that can get the jobs done that are needed. Challenge, not a problem, it's a challenge and it's an opportunity. So what we're doing in the city of Portsmouth, having recognized that and working with LIS, which is Local Initiative Services Corporation and our E D A, we're standing up a program in Portsmouth called Emerging Developers Group. Why is that important? Well, remember we talked about there may be some developers that can't be a prime, but they can be a sub. And they have the expertise to bring to the table, but they may not have the ability to get access to the dollars, to get access to bonding. They may not have all those things in place. So what we've done is with LIS and E D A has supported this effort, our Economic Development Authority, they're standing up a program called the Emerging Developers Group right here in the city of Portsmouth. It is, there's no other city that is doing this program. It came from a national program in which LIS does nationally in some of its urban areas. And what they're doing is they're taking a select group of developers. I think they're going to start with a cohort of 40 applicants. And those applicants are going to go through a rigorous development program, financing, building, paperwork, insurances, everything you need to do, how to acquire contracts, everything you need to do to be ready to participate in business here in the city of Portsmouth. Why is that important? Well, one group, the Conover Group, purchased a piece of property right across from Bloom. They're going to be putting a mixed-use development right on that property. Those two young developers are in that class and in that cohort. And what we identified was that is a gap. And so a part of this whole disparity program to me is not just looking at one side of it. We've got to get people scaled up and ready to go if that's our intention. Because ultimately, if we're going to create equity, it's not going to be through a policy only. It's got to be through getting people that want to do the work, that are qualified to do the work, but may have some things that they need to help them get there, get them ready and support those kind of efforts. So I think our E D A put up about $50,000 toward that effort. The goal is to raise about a half a million dollars or more. We're well on track to do that. The cohorts will start, I think, in March. They're taking applications now. So if you know any young developers or older developers for that part, men and women developers, and it is focused primarily toward the minority development group because when LIS looked at those numbers, they saw where the gaps were in those areas. And they are intent on helping us to create the capacity, but more importantly, to give people a fair chance at the opportunity. And I think that's a critical program. Again, it was stood up here in Portsmouth for that specific reason and no other locality has that program. So we're pretty fortunate to have that happen. I'll get the data on it all and the information and I'll make sure that everyone gets a copy. But I serve as an advisor on that particular board, the Emerging Developers Group Board. I think you too, Mr. Carter, you're aware of that. So that's one of the things that we're doing. So I just wanted to let folks know, we as a city are being proactive. We recognize that we need to create opportunities. Construction is just one area. There are other areas, of course, in which we are going to be delving into that. So stay tuned on that. The other thing that I had...
Before you, can I just pile on?
Yeah, go ahead.
So to, in addition to E D A supporting LIS, E D A has their Small Business Startup Grant Program. I've only watched for the last couple of years, but the last couple of years, the huge percentage of that startup grant money is going to minority and women-owned businesses. So, and if there are other small businesses out there, minority women-owned businesses especially, the Economic Development Office is always looking for new small business startups to provide grant opportunities. They're doing a good job finding those kind of businesses to support.
They really are. And so that's a good segue because that's where I was going next. But so we have kind of gotten known in the city of Portsmouth for that particular thing that we're doing with economic development. I think we gave over a half a million dollars in startup grants to mostly minority and women businesses right here in the city of Portsmouth. So I wanted to ask you, how does that connect with our whole focus on helping businesses, minority and women-owned businesses to participate in the programs of procurement? That program through our Economic Development Department, is that a part of this overall comprehensive program to also help stand-up businesses in our city?
Absolutely. This is a whole ecosystem. It's not a one-track process.
Right.
All the things that you just talked about, whether it's really just Portsmouth-bound or regional bound...
Sure.
To get more businesses the capacity to participate. But that's really the thing that we're really focused on here, is making sure that we have businesses that's sitting on the bench, ready to get into the game.
Correct.
Because if they're not ready to get into the game, this particular bid or this particular R F P is not for you. You have to be ready when that R F P shows up. You can't start getting ready then. So what we want to do is build that capacity so that as we're looking for things to procure for our city, we have more and more people and more and more opportunities to vet who's going to do it. That makes it better for us because now we have a choice rather than we have this one contractor that bids all the time and we have no way of managing what that cost is because we got to get a job there and we won't have one contractor do it. So we got to raise the businesses around us to have more capacity to do more things that we're trying to get done. And we got some pretty lofty goals that we're about to put in place and we're going to need people helping us to get those things done.
100%. Well, I just want to thank you guys and this was really good input. It's a process, right?
Absolutely.
And so I did want to ask Madam Attorney, is this going to be a policy or an actual ordinance?
No, no, it'll be a policy.
Because I saw on the mention, it said ordinance.
Well, it's not going to be an ordinance.
And I understood that. I just want to make sure we're all clear on what this is.
Right. But council will have buy-in. You all will review it and vote on it, which is very rare for policy. But I think because it is a new area, it's an area that's been important to this council and the one before that you all will have buy-in on it. And so there will be a vote to approve it, again, which is rare. So there won't be a bunch of policies coming with this.
This is not the opening door, too.
No.
We wrestled with that, but we thought that it was good for council to have buy-in for this. And I will stress, now that you gave me the floor, one thing.
You have the floor, man.
Thank you. Please read the full disparity study. There's some wonderful suggestions in there, programs to consider, all of these that you touched on. M G T did a great job of sort of staffing that up comparable to what we have already in the city. I had an opportunity early on to present some information to E D A on it and they delved very deeply into some of the programming that was in there, so much so that there was an appendix that was missing that we didn't even realize. And when we discovered it, it was a treasure trove of ideas relevant to our city. So not only the methodology, which will feed the type of data that we'll need, but also, you know, ideas for us to sort of wrap our head around as we're thinking about programming, building up the capacity, how do we bring the departments together? One of the things that she was working on, that's Renetta Mitchell, who now is on her own, not with M G T, but has her own program. She was, her next, she helped kind of not only do the, we're very fortunate, she did the disparity study, the last one, the current one. She helped us develop the actual policy. And now she's doing implementation in the sense of coordinating the managers' teams that will be working together and talking with them about how best to kind of mesh all of these things together. So we're not recreating the wheel. We're not leaving out the school board, the E D A, the minority supervisor, all procurement, all of them will have almost like an M O U of how this will work together. And so it's coming along to be very seamless and I think it's important to read that report cover to cover to be able to appreciate it as a whole.
And the last question, Mr. Manager, from a timeline perspective, I know you put in all the pieces together. Do we have a reasonable expectation? Will this be wrapped up and put in place by the summer, the end of the year? I mean, what are our thoughts in that?
Back a whole lot closer. We're talking about in the next 90 days.
Okay.
Up and operational.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have the expectation set, which is...
A lot closer than...
Well, there you go. Thank you very much.
No problem. Go Portsmouth.
Go Portsmouth.
Our next presentation?
Don't be chatty.
I'm sorry. Let me go. I'll introduce Mr. Riley and Mr. Robertson. They'll do the presentation.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Gerard Robertson, Director of Public Works. We will go over roads and bridges maintenance for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. A little background about our paving in our city of Portsmouth. The city of Portsmouth has 884 moving lanes. Pretty much a lane is dropped down the road. You're in a two-lane road, that's a lane. If you're in a four-lane road like Portsmouth Boulevard, those are lanes, which is defined as the length of roadway. Or by taking the number of lanes into account, you break that down, the breakdown of lanes miles consistent. Our lane miles are broken down into primary and arterial, locals and connectors. We have 188 peak hour moving lane miles, which is pretty much lane miles. Locals and connectors, we have a total of 696 peak hour lane miles. Just your secondary roads versus your primary versus Portsmouth Boulevard, F and H, those are your primary. Our current paving budget for F Y 25 is 4.3 million. I anticipate it paving lane miles for F Y 25 is approximately 20 miles. The city is currently, the city of Portsmouth is currently on a 30-year paving cycle for arterials and 40-year paving cycle for locals and connectors. The industry standard is 15 to 20 years. But realistically in the region, our target is going to be somewhere around 25, 25 years.
When I came on council, that figure was 50-year cycle. So we're 10 years better. Hey, that's what I'm talking about.
Moving in the right direction.
How many years is that to get 10 years better?
V D O has a paving rating system. We call it the C C I, P C I, the Critical Condition Index, numerical index from 0 to 100, used to indicate the general conditions of the roadway. C C I is the lower, C C I is the lower value of low-rated distress, fatigue, crack, rutting, et cetera, and non-low-rated distress, transverse, longitudinal cracking, joint separation, bleeding, and et cetera for asphalt pavings. There are five classes, a ranking in the range of 60 to 69 is considered fair, a ranking of 49 and below is considered very poor. V D O provides state-of-good repairs up to 1.5 million for roadways with C C I's below 60. That's pretty much, pretty much your primary roads. We're not talking about your connector or your local, just pretty much your state roads. Critical Condition Index and General Condition Rating. So V D O conducts the road assessment, C C I scoring annually, but they do not do it for all of our roads, just pretty much our state roads and our primaries and arterial. The city maintains bridges, the city maintains bridges are inspected every two years. That's considered a general condition rating, our G C R. And currently, right now, the city of Portsmouth has 122 primary and arterial roads under C C I rating. We have 373 locals and connectors under the C C I rating. We have five locally maintained bridges, Mr. James will talk about in a second, that's in fair condition with the exception of Paradise Creek, the Paradise Creek Bridge. V D O does not inspect all roads in Portsmouth, only stating high-traffic roads above the annual average daily traffic, which is the only thing, anything over 3,500 annually. Previous paving cycles for our fiscal year, the paving cycles have not consistently followed the V D O recommended paving cycles. In F Y 23, you can see we've paved, the city completed the highest amount of milling and overlay work in seven years. In F Y 25, our paving budget is currently 4.3 million, but paving totals do not include infrastructure projects by the Department of Utilities or Engineering. Those are special projects. And our streets and highways spends on an average of 100,000 annually repairing top. Opposed paving cycle. The Virginia Department of Transportation recommends a repaving cycle of 15 to 20 years as asphalt typically reaches the end of its lifespan at 20 years. However, the city of Portsmouth, and I shouldn't have said 30 to 40, so I apologize, but our paving cycle is 30 to 40 years. We do have a plan to get us to a realistic goal of 25 years. F Y 26 budget proposal allocate $8 million for paving. An incremental increase of $1 million every year for seven years to get us to a $15 million that'll get us to a $15 million paving budget, and that'll get us to a 25-year paving cycle. The average lane mile is, on a high road, is 228,000 dollars per one lane mile. So that'll get us, this doesn't include inflation, doesn't include the cost of increasing materials. Strategic partnerships. Contract with a paving and right-of-way management company that develops paving, paving forecasts and strategies. Companies that can go out and give us an annual score, typically give us a forecast of what paving, what would I recommend versus how we going out and inspecting the road. How do we manage it going forward? Like I said, strategic pavement and right-of-way solutions, technology, adequate funding annually for roads and bridges along with right-of-way assets, including concrete, I mean sidewalks, the concrete. Forecast paving projects five years out and adjust if needed. Annually inspect and score roads through available technologies. Repair potholes, road issues in-house to expand the life expectancy, lifespan of the roads. This is just a snapshot of the roads that we do plan to pave this upcoming cycle, starting in the spring, as I said, early spring, and we're estimating to pave around 20 lane miles.
What are those numbers at the end? Is that how many miles? What is that?
That's how many miles the actual road is. Previous year's FY spending. The total spending over the previous 16 years was 34.8 million. Over 11 years, the city funded less than $2 million a year for paving. And fiscal years 23, 24, and 25, 1.5 of that budget went to SGR paving projects with VDOT.
What's SGR?
SGR, state of goods repair, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor of the City Council. So bridges are designed with a useful life of between 50 and 75 years. They're inspected every two years by federal standard. If you find a defect or deficiency that requires it to be inspected more frequently, they're inspected yearly. Underwater bridge inspections take place every five years. First repairs are scheduled routinely every three to five years or every five to seven years, depending on what you find in the inspection. Repairs may include concrete restoration, cleaning and painting of steel, repair replacement of ankle bolts, steel connections, bearing plates, et cetera. All of this is to extend the service life of the city. So the National Bridge Rating System inventory collects all information on all bridges subject to traffic. Bridge length has to be more than 20 feet where vehicular traffic's included. So they're looking at four components, bridge deck, bridge superstructure, bridge substructure, and pole. The rating scale is from 0 to 9, 0 being the worst, 9 being the best. VDOT and FHWA simplify that rating scale into a general condition rating, such that the minimum GCR, less than or equal to 4 is considered poor. Between 4 and 7 is considered fair. Anything above, equal to or above 7 is considered good. This is the bridges that we maintain. We maintain five bridges, Churchland Bridge, Paradise Creek, London Boulevard over the Norfolk Belt Line, London Boulevard over MLK Freeway, and Clifford Street Bridge. So the Churchland Bridge, the northbound span, is a span going out of town. The southbound leg is coming into town from Churchland. That span is a bit newer. The 1951 span is the one that was recently replaced. And so if you go over to the general condition ratings, it's considered one bridge. That minimum GCR on the southbound lane, and that's prior to the current rehabilitation that's taken place. Paradise Creek Bridge is a 1944 bridge, has a minimum GCR of one of the components of 4, which means it's in poor condition. That bridge is scheduled for replacement, which we'll talk a little bit on the next slide. As you see, the Belt Line Bridges or the London Boulevard Bridges are both 1971. They're both fair. Clifford Street Bridge, 2005 Bridge, is also in fair condition. So just over the past few years, some of the past bridge findings, say the past 10 years, the southbound lane, prior to the bridge replacement project, that deck was rehabbed. And you see the cost and the state share of that cost. Paradise Creek Bridge has some miscellaneous concrete repairs and some other repairs, with the cost and the state share. Currently, you have Churchland Bridge, just over $43 million, state share being just about $25 million. That's reimbursable. Most of those reimbursements have come in. That total amount is for design, right-of-way, and construction. The actual construction contract is 34.7 million. And so moving on to the upcoming projects, Paradise Creek Bridge replacement, a $60 million project, federal share 14 and 1/2. That project's scheduled for advertisement sometime late spring, summer this year. And then London Boulevard Bridge rehab is just under $5 million, and no funding has been identified for that outside of CIP funds. Were you looking for additional funding from whether it be the state, federal government, trying to see if possible, build repairs? And with that, are we stand ready to take any questions?
Question, Moody.
Thanks for the presentation. Very enlightening. Cedar Lane, how are we coming along on correcting the below-grade manhole covers?
So Cedar Lane, we went out for a quick quote. We had a contract with a previous contractor. A contract expired, and we can't do business without a contract. So we had to put it off for a quick quote. The quick quote recently came back. A vendor was awarded it, and I speak with the, we have a meeting next week to speak with the vendor in lieu of the previous contract.
Okay, so the timeline, or what do you anticipate the timeline being?
Realistic.
Realistic.
Don't tell them something you can't do. Realistically, I would say a timeline of 60 days. Only they have to go out, they have to look at it. They have to assess what they need as far as materials, and then raise. Those manhole covers need to be manually raised, not two-inch risers. They need to be manually raised. And for them to do that, they need to go out there and see it, have to mill it back, manually raise it, mill it. So realistically, I would say 60 days. That's being...
Thanks.
Councilman Tyus.
Yes, I wanted to also add on to the question from Councilman Moody regarding, it stems from the Cedar Lane pavement. I think we, it went through a pavement, then I saw a repaving or something, or I don't know what you were referring to. There was a repaving happening. So on page, oh, I don't know the page number, but the proposed paving cycle, you mentioned here about strategic partnership. So, and then you just mentioned that you have to wait to get a new, the contract expires with whoever currently did it, and then you have to put that back out for bid. So do we have, or is there some way that we can have a long-term contract or like a service that we use, that we can be consistent with using? Or does every pavement have to go, every time we do a road pavement, does it have to go out for bid? How does that work? Because it, just to be consistent with the, once we find someone that does a good job, does it in a timely manner, how do we make sure that we maybe have some type of long-term strategic partnership with that particular contractor or provider?
You guys want to try that? Want me to do it?
So the strategic partnership that I mentioned here is for paving, is a paving management solution, company that'll come in and help, help us look at the grading, inspect, and tell us exactly what roads we need to pave. As far as contractors, we do have a, we do, we took a different approach. Instead of having one contractor, we have two now. So we have two contractors that are on a year. And then we just, we look at the performance that they've done in that year. And then they can, they have the option, they have four one-year options. And we also have the four one-year options. So locking a paving company in for a long-term, then that's not, to me, that's not a good idea. Keeping them on at one year, four-year options gives us an opportunity to evaluate, like the manager said, their performance, and actually say, hey, we want to continue moving forward with you, or we'll just put it back out for bid.
So in this case, you decided that we needed to, because of past performance, you need to put it back out for bid? Is that what you're...
The Cedar Lane, one, because we didn't have an existing contract with that vendor. Instead of having that vendor come back and do it, because we didn't have an existing contract, and they had poor performance, we decided to put it out for a quick quote to get a vendor in, so we can go ahead and get the work done. But we do have two existing contractors for paving.
Okay, thank you. And we still work within the procurement statute requirements, which is really dependent on value, relationships, and other exceptions, but we have to be mindful of that as well.
Councilman Hugo, then Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Could you back up maybe one slide to the proposed paving cycle? Yeah, so, nope, that's the one. So this year, we're spending 4.3 million, and we're paving 20 lane miles. Okay, so that means if we spent 8.6 million, we could pay 40 lane miles, right? Double, just double?
Potentially.
Okay.
It is, you know, based on the condition of the road, based on the size of the road, based on the other assets around the road, you know, the traffic control. There are other things that go into that factor, so you may not get a true double your math.
Okay, but it's close.
Ballpark.
So here's where your math is confusing me then. So we need to pave 35 lane miles a year to cover 884 lane miles in 25 years? Okay, that's the math.
Right.
Well, 35 lane miles is $7.5 million. So we are planning to allocate 8 million. So we're going to immediately get to our 25-year goal, starting next year.
Can I have you with that?
Yep.
That will be true if we have already been spending that much. We're behind. We got to catch up.
Okay.
So there are roads that's already well beyond that 25-year span that we have to take care of. So it's not like we can spend that amount today and we catch up. Those roads, that's, if we spend that amount, we can do the amount of lane miles you're talking about. But that doesn't stop the backlog that we've already got.
Yeah, okay, so then what's the catch-up plan?
That is the catch-up.
Well, this is just a money plan. This isn't a catch-up plan.
I'm not following you.
Well, so if we allocate 8 million next year, we're going to pay 40 lane miles?
Well, remember, the actual goal was to escalate that number by one day. Now, let me preface this by saying, this is proposed budget. We haven't even got to the point where we're actually allocating money to this yet. I just need it up. I need you guys to know what the actual cost of all these things are going to be.
Yeah, I'm tracking with you, but my point is, I'm not understanding your math. I mean, $8 million at $215,000 a lane mile is almost 40 lane miles. Then we add $1 million to that in '27, that's another five lane miles. So that year, we're going to pay 45 lane miles. The year after, we're going to pay 50 lane miles. The year after, we're going to pay 55 lane miles. I mean, every year, by adding $1 million to the $8 million. Now, again, you all said, not counting inflation.
Yes.
But, so the math suggests to me that by the time we get to $15 million a year, we should be paving 70 lane miles a year?
There's some work there, but remember, we've got 800 lane miles in the city. 880 or something like that.
Okay, and if our goal is 25 lane miles a year eventually, that's 7.5 million dollars a year in today dollars. And we're going to be spending $15 million a year in year 20, I'm sorry, in year 33.
Okay.
So, so again, this is just a money plan. This isn't a lane mile plan. And that's the piece that appears to me to be confusing.
Well, the lane mile plan is that even if we're spending money today, remember, as we're, as we're trying to work through the backlog, the roads that are in existing are still deteriorating. So it's not like, you know, we catch up quickly, you know what I mean? We're kind of in a hole that we got to dig our way out of. It's going to take a little bit of money to get to that. And as we evaluate this, if it doesn't take seven years to get there, then we won't do that for seven years. But what we need to do is, we've got to have a plan that addresses what our current need is, plus the backlog.
Okay, so can you go to the, maybe it's the slide that has the list of next-year roads? Do you have a slide that has next-year roads that tallies out to 40 lane miles?
No.
That's this year, right? That's 20 lane miles?
Roughly 20 years. And when we say estimated 20 years, it all depends on if it's a primary road. If it's a primary arterial road, then traffic control, all, it's a lot of things that go into that cost. So the cost right now, that we just did one road, the primary road, is 228,000. Doesn't mean that next year, that cost itself won't go up. So those roads are some primaries, some secondary roads.
Okay, so maybe this is a long way to get to, is paving a CIP?
Right, that's where it's going.
Okay, so we should have a five-year paving plan, right?
We should. I agree.
So right now, we have a one-year paving plan. It happens to be this year.
Yes.
Do we have a next-year paving plan for the $8 million?
So...
Go ahead.
So that's what we was proposing as far as allocating a pavement solution. That'll be also in the budget, having a company help come in and tell us what we can predict and what we need to pay five years out. So we'll have a five-year forecast, as stated in here, a forecast paving projects five years out, and adjust them as needed, so that we won't have the backlog that we do. And we'll have historical data.
The goal is so that when Joe Citizen comes to you and say, hey, Councilman, when am I going to get my road paid? We can actually find that. Okay, this is the thing I think.
Okay, so you and I have the same goal. And that means we got to have more than a just-this-year plan for paving. And, you know, until you put that slide up there with the this-year plan, I had no idea what 20 lane miles we were going to pay. Okay, so I go to Civic League meetings, along with the other six of my colleagues, and those are the kind of questions. When's my street going to get paved? And to this point, my answer has been, I don't know, because I don't have the list. It would be very helpful to have a five-year plan, okay?
That's what we're working for.
Yeah, now, so you all get pothole data in the See Click Fix 311 system. Presumably, if we're fixing a lot of potholes on Joe Schmo's road, that means Joe Schmo's road is about due for repaving, right? Are we analyzing the 311 data to understand where the worst roads are as we're building our paving plan?
I don't know if that would necessarily correlate, because that 311 requires the citizens to report. And in certain areas, you're not having, you know, citizens report that. So they could be having potholes in other areas, but the citizens aren't reporting that. So I don't know if we can correlate that data since that...
Well, we...
But that's not the only thing.
What we can't say is, just because you haven't reported a pothole, your road doesn't need paid.
Right, that's what I'm saying, exactly.
Is if you've had 700 potholes reported on your block, it's probably about time to pave that stretch of road, because 700 pothole fixes probably means you're driving on the moon.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out the citizens that are not using the app in certain neighborhoods.
And, you know, part of what we're aiming to do is, as we're talking to Civic Leagues, is introduce folks to See Click Fix, so that they understand, hey, there really is a methodology to get your pothole reported.
No, I think it should be a data point.
Yeah, and...
No, I think it should be a data point, but not an only data point.
And factor into our analysis for how we build the plan.
Absolutely, part of the plan, but remember, the index that VDOT uses, actually inspect and grade roads, that's what he's talking about, actually getting all, they grade the roads that, you know, the state routes and the high-volume roads.
Yeah.
We got a lot of roads that ain't that, and we need a way of doing that same thing for all of our roads, so we can get a full pavement plan versus a partial pavement plan.
And last question, so, so we get money from the state for the volume of traffic that the port causes, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's how it works.
Well, we get money from the state for truck traffic on some portion of roads. Really, my question is, we got trucks driving on roads that surely are not factored into whatever the state is giving us. So, how do we update the information that the state's using to, to renumerate us to keep our roads up to snuff because of the port traffic? Because we, we got trucks cutting through, you know, neighborhoods all the time, and there's some roads that run parallel to 164, as an example, that are beat to heck, and best I know, it's on us to keep those roads up to snuff, because we're not getting any money from the state, even though the reason that those roads are beat to heck is because the trucks are using those roads to, to move the port transfer, the, the port products around.
Yeah, VDOT has a formula for allocating funds to municipalities for roads and upgrades. Now, it's a pretty difficult project to, to get reformulated. We're probably gonna need some heavy lift assistance, if we're talking about trying to reformulate what VDOT actually provides to us, to municipalities for road improvements. And actually, that's a, a local lift that we can actually get done. But I'm, I'm interested in getting more money, if you know, if you are, somebody can.
Well, the only way we're gonna get more money is to put it into our next legislative agenda, and the only way we'll have the data we need to put it in the legislative agenda is to go figure out what roads are they helping us with, and what roads are getting beat up, and, and it's on our backs, and that comes back to the, the, you know, the paving plan, factoring those roads in, and recognizing, hey, so, we're paving some of these roads every five years, because, you know, we, we got potholes in those roads that are primarily being put in there because of truck traffic.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Moody?
Well, what you're talking about is money, and we're letting potential money escape by not having a weight enforcement unit. You know, the, the trucks, if you notice, if you pass a truck, look at the tires on the trailer, and, and it's usually a pretty educated guess, if those tires are, are looking like they're low, it's not because of the lack of air, it's because of the, the weight condition. Chesapeake has a weight enforcement unit, we used to, that's potentially a, a money-maker from the standpoint that overweight trucks are damaging our bridges, damaging our roads, and what's happening too, due to the limited parking space, you're seeing more trucks with their trailers go into our neighborhoods to park. And, most of them, when they go in there, some of them are still loaded, and damaging the roads. So, you know, I've mentioned this before, I think it's something that we, we need to look at revitalizing our, our enforcement unit. And I understand the equipment is still around somewhere, obviously, training would need to take place, but I know Chesapeake has an enforcement unit, we, we need to, to check with them and see what kind of money it's generating.
Right.
Obviously, we got more truck traffic in Portsmouth than Chesapeake does, but I understand that generates pretty good money, but money that we don't have when we need to keep repairing bridges and roads. The other thing, you mentioned about the VDOT funding, that, that money used to come in the urban allocation fund, is, is that still where the VDOT money for paving and stuff comes from, James?
No, sir, they, they did away, if it's okay, they did away with the urban allocation, and so now they have a different number of funding programs through local assistance, and SGR is just one of the, one of those programs.
Whatever that, whatever that bucket of money is, due to more and more truck traffic in Portsmouth, due to the growth of the port operation, we, we definitely need to, you know, include in our next legislative package, substantial increase in that fund. I don't know what the fund is called now, but whatever bucket of money it comes from, we, we need to have a sizable increase.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. To the points of Councilman Hugel and Vice Mayor Moody, the fund, if I'm not mistaken, Portsmouth, we, for the last couple of years, we've included that in our package. It hasn't gone very far.
Yep.
So, I believe it's $1.5 million annually that all five host cities share, and so all the five host cities, I believe, three or four of us actively participate in it. So, that equates to three or four hundred thousand dollars, if not even that much, which isn't very much when you look at lane maintenance, but to Councilman Hugel's point, it only addresses streets that are primarily directed into the port, which, I think, you know, this has been an issue that we've been trying to fight for quite a while with the ports, and of course, the Commonwealth. But I think to Vice Mayor Moody's point, if we can find ways to better regulate our streets as far as maybe the weight limit, because these, these trucks are damaging our streets, which is causing more of an issue. When I spoke with some of our legislators and people in Richmond, it doesn't seem like it's a battle that many people wanna tackle, take on with the port. And so, it's something that I think, as a city, we're gonna have to get more aggressive on, because if not, it means it costs taxpayers more and more dollars, and we have to be very proactive in that. And I'm glad to see that we are, you know, you're asking for the extra 8 million to go, you know, retrospect, because we don't have a last street that can be fixed, but I think we also need to take into account, how can we mitigate damage moving forward, especially with our streets, I mean, especially our trucks on our, on our residential streets. You go to some of the communities I see, in Mount Herman, Port Knoll, Prentice Park, I mean, a lot of communities, I mean, you see curves are being tore up, you can see where the trucks have been there for quite some time, you now have indentions in the road.
Yep.
And we have to do a better way of managing how we're allowing, check the trailers onto our roads, but also how we're gonna mitigate on our primary roads, not necessarily just 164. Because from my understanding, the port where it's located, most of that money's going towards 164, not really towards our residential community streets. So, we gotta develop some type of program, to Vice Mayor Moody's point, how can we mitigate this, and how can we get more aggressive on taking care of what we do have, so down the road isn't costing us much?
Mayor, just talk, jump in.
Yes, Adam Attorney, go ahead.
I was at the General Assembly Building today to put forth our charter amendment in the Senate, and I will tell you that that building was crawling with people pushing their issues. I don't think it's enough for us to simply send a packet. We need to be there consistently, pushing our agenda. There's tons of interest around that building doing that, and we have the highest ranking members in both houses, and we should be really utilizing that access. You can log in by Zoom, it's not called Zoom, but whatever the General Assembly Zoom is, to speak on these issues. I know that Ms. Neal and our lobbyist, Spotsnead, is available to provide us with when things are happening. You all may have seen some of his emails, both of the emails, about when these particular bills are coming through, but not just testifying in those places, but showing up, showing our faces in the building to speak to those that are gonna be making those decisions. It's, today was the first day, so we have a benefit that we kinda are a week behind. It's a short session, it's 45 days, so that puts us right to the end of February, so we can still push the agenda that we have now to get some of these things that you're asking for. Just wanted to mention that.
Hey, we should do some recurrent meetings, or trips, for, you know, some of us, not just for you guys, but some of us, just have some recurrent meetings, and we, we go up there and just meet with folks.
Well, I think that's, that, that absolutely is appropriate, and one of the things is, we need to get the talking points straight sooner rather than later on what the, we can't go up there with 100 issues.
Yes.
We go with probably one or two, I think is a good place to start, and we have talked about that, I know the Personnel Committee, we were just talking about having a presence up there this year, all of us, and that doesn't mean we gotta all take a ride together, just show up strategically, and just to say, hey, look, we, we would appreciate if you guys could address these concerns we have. So, I think what, what, what'll help us in doing that is if we could define some talking points for all of us, like in the next.
Week.
Yeah, in the next week, and so that one, because we all have different schedules, but we can all make a schedule to go up and talk, and I know Mr. Tillage has worked up there, I don't necessarily recommend we go up on the days when everybody shows up, you know, on those legislative days, because you don't really get in the door. I think we need to be strategic about when and how we show up, and I'm, I'm absolutely on board with that, for sure.
Don't underestimate the Zoom, that's very powerful, you could do that right from your, your offices to, to support or fight against certain things that are gonna be up for this.
But we do have a seasoned veteran on our Legislative Committee, so I think he can kinda guide us.
And I think with, Councilman Hugel and I being the liaisons to the Legislative Committee, him and I can get together to discuss a strategy to share with you all, on how we can better use our next 40 days.
I would appreciate that very much, I think it's very timely, and it's a great recommendation. Sir?
Thank you, sir. That's what I was gonna ask, if we could get a strategy together that we could all, all follow. But I wanted to go back to the point here that Councilman Hugel was making, in, in that, I'm glad you're addressing these issues, but I'm severely disappointed there's not a five-year plan already. I know you're addressing it by saying we could bring in a firm, but you should already have that five-year plan in place, even if it's not the one where you're gonna finalize out there, so that we can at least have some projection and then start to refine it as we get more, more information. But to me, a one-year plan is awfully inadequate.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
In address, please. Absolutely, so you have the floor.
One of the problems that we have is that we have to change the way we've historically done things. You'll have a five-year plan, because there wasn't a five-year plan a year ago, two years ago, three years ago.
Right.
Should've been a five-year plan the whole time. We're trying to correct that now, so, I'm sorry that you're disappointed in that, but that's what we're trying to do at this point, we're bringing it to you so that we can change what the historical behavior is. So, give us a moment, we're gonna make this work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Could we get an electronic copy of this brief? Because there's some slides, like the slide with the list, the contrast between the background and the list is nearly impossible to read, and surely it will be impossible for me to scan, so if somebody can send me a PDF of this thing, that would be swell.
I can send it to you.
But that was on purpose, so that you couldn't chew it. I appreciate that.
I'll send it out to you.
Okay, thank you.
One more. Councilman Attanas, absolutely.
I just wanna say thank you, this is, very good to know, like Councilman Hugel said, these are questions that citizens ask, they wanna know, you know, how their streets are being upheld or corrected in their neighborhood. One thing, the incremental increase, are we, are you, is this kind of an estimate of what you think it'll take to catch up over the next seven years right now?
Yes.
Okay, and I equate this, this is how I think about this, guys, to, if you have a house and you neglected, you're doing any type of work on your house for, let's say, over the past 40 years, and then you see a broken window, you see some rusting, you know, steel, you see some rotted wood, at, at the time, those things cost just a little bit, but over time, after 40 years, it's gonna take a whole lot more to make up all those projects, and you do, it's not just, oh, I can come up with a five-year plan, you're now having to prioritize which one is more, you know, important, which one is gonna make my house fall down or less insurable, it's a whole bunch of other aspects. So, that's how I think about things, and we're talking, talking about like catching up over a five-year plan, like a house, so.
Deferred maintenance.
Yes, deferred maintenance, yes, thank you.
Deferred maintenance.
I couldn't find that word, thank you, yes.
And I appreciate you sharing that, because it's important that we understand, as leaders and as a body, as a group, you know, we, we all have our ideas of when things should take place, but we have to understand comprehensively, that to a lot of those things that we are being presented with, we had no plan, no plan existed, and in the, in the effort that we're putting together to be more accountable to not only ourselves, but to the citizens who represent us, it's important that we take our time and do it right. That doesn't mean we gonna get it right all the time, but it's important that we take our time and get it right. So, this is always gonna be important, our dialogue, different ideas, as I share with you guys, we've got an awesome team here with a lot of talent. It's important that we all engage and find the best way forward, and we'll get there. I, I truly believe we'll get there, we've got the right leadership, and they believe in what they're doing, and so we're gonna, we're gonna support that and make our city better, okay?
Absolutely. Go Portsmouth.
Go Portsmouth. Any more questions for? Protect the brand.
I'm sorry, point of understanding is other maintenance issues that go along with the bridges, for instance, rails and lighting, are those covered under this plan that you're talking about, or is that a separate department? It's just from my understanding, I apologize, I don't, I don't know that it's just.
That's a full bridge plan.
So, if you're replacing a bridge, it includes everything, but if you're talking day-to-day routine, it just depends on what the element is. So, lighting is VDOT, not both VDOT, but Dominion, Dominion Power, and then for railing, it depends on what it is, like small sections of rail, polywarks, a larger section of rail, that's a complete replacement, that'll come through engineering.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the brief.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mayor. It's Carter.
I'm done.
Are there any, any other questions or concerns that any of you guys wanna bring forward for the good of the order?
Just once this is adjourned, I do wanna just have a quick word with all of you before you leave, once we're off, off campus.
Oh, absolutely. Well, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And that concludes our public work session for today, this meeting is adjourned.